I just want the paper, I just want the paper, I just want the paper. I just want the paper, I just want the paper, I just want the paper.
It's still a feeling that you love to hate, don't hesitate to put in work just to get this paid. And all is talk about food, I guess I need a plate. Who wants to trap house boom, I guess I flip the state to get this rave. Money violent like a missing rate, half the birthday, my fireproof like independent states. Spark a split of hate, niggas learn from that chink shit. Now my shooters move around, we moving brinkswich. I'm from the school of the hard knocks from a hard block. I need a beat with a hard knock flipping hard rock. Need a coop with a hard top or a hard drop. Pull it out, they be all shocked, watch their jaws drop. My niggas crazy, but we optimistic. Cause I remember days I didn't have a pot to piss in. Somebody tell these pussy niggas, I'm the best that did it. Your boy dag fire brain, that's the best description, motherfuckers.
I just want the paper, I just. What's going on? There we go, here what's popping? Y'all already know what time it is, man. This is Talking Tough with Stino once again. I am your host, the toughest of all things tough. That is tough Stino, man, who we as usual, weartough.com. Y'all make sure y'all go over to weartough.com and go ahead and go shopping, man. Got to go get you something off that catalog, man. I mean, and support the wave, support the wave. Salute to everybody tuning in, you already know Poncho, what's popping? Uh, yeah, man, so look, man. The LA City Council Nori Martinez was caught using some very foul language towards African Americans, man. And I'm saying which, which, which is kind of astounding to me because you know, I, I believe that you know, black and brown people uh, supposed to be close, man. I mean, it is, it's, you know, supposed to have, supposed to have that, supposed to have that type of camaraderie champ. That mean they supposed to have that type of camaraderie. So let's see what she says, man. This shit is kind of crazy, but you know, these niggas always be talking crazy about us. That mean salute to CNN. Uh, LA, uh, Los Angeles City Council President issues apology after making racial remarks and leaked audio. So they did provide the audio, but I'm not gonna play it. Y'all could go check it out if y'all want to. I'm not out, I'll read what the article say, you ever seen? Cause you know, YouTube be tweaking sometime. But this is as per CNN, Los Angeles City Council President Nori Martinez is apologizing after making racist remarks toward a fellow uh, council member and his black child. Now I mean, in a moment of intense frustration and anger, I let the situation get the best of me. And I hold myself accountable for these comments. For that, I am sorry. This is what, uh, the city council president, uh, Nori Martinez said in the statement to directly to CNN. Though remarks were part of a leaked audio that was posted anonymously on Reddit. And obtained by the Los Angeles Times, salute to both of those, uh, platforms, Reddit and the Los Angeles Times. According to newspaper, the audio details a conversation between Martinez, council members Gil Cidio and Kevin De Leon. And Los Angeles, uh, Los Angeles County Federation of Labor President Ron Herrera, which seems to be for Hispanic people. I'm saying. Much of the conversation focused on maps proposed by the city's re, uh, redistrict, redistricting commission. And the council members frustration with them as well as the need to ensure that heavily Latino districts did not lose economic assets. So as you hear here, and I'm saying these niggas is fighting for their own. They fighting for their own. This is, this is for Hispanic, Latino, uh, people that hold power within that city. And you know, being as those changes are happening, they're fighting to make sure that the Latinos areas in the city don't lose certain money and certain funding, which I can't say is wrong because I wish more, uh, black people would do the same thing. And I'm saying you gotta make sure that you, uh, look out for your community, man. But it goes on to say, uh, the council members then discuss, council member Mike Bonin, a white man. In clips of the leaked audio post by the Times, Martinez is heard recounting a conversation and says, Bonin think he's effing black. According to the Times, Martinez says Bonita appeared with his son on a float in a Martin Luther King Junior Day Parade. And he handled his young black son as though he were an accessory. The Times reported that Martinez also said of Bonin's child, Paris Changrito. Or he's like a monkey. God damn champ. Salute to my nigga show face news in the building. I make sure y'all go follow show page, show face news expeditiously champ. Go follow my son, that nigga on here going crazy. And I'm saying salute, salute to the game. But yeah, man, so city council member, uh, Nori Martinez and four other, uh, Hispanic council members are just talking crazy. They talking crazy, they saying little monkey, they say, and I'm saying they talking down about black people, even though this, this man is white. I believe he has a black son. And I'm saying because he said he treats his black son like an accessory and said he's like a monkey. In a leak audio, Martinez can be heard speaking about Bonin's son allegedly misbehaving while at the parade by hanging from a railing on their float saying, this kid, uh, is going to tip us over. They're raising him like a little white kid, Martinez said in the audio released by the Times. I was like, this kid needs a beat down. Let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back. Alright, so yo, they are tweaking right now. These is, these are people that hold office. These is people that make decisions with the community. So for them to be looking down on, on, on a certain people is very alarming, bro. And I'm saying, cause as you can see, as I said earlier, they had a conversation talking about how the Latino community cannot lose any funding, cannot lose certain things. What about the black community? Y'all not just there for Latinos, y'all there for everybody. Y'all LA City Council, not LA Latino Council. Y'all supposed to be for everybody. Salute Mark P, man, y'all already know the vibes, sniper gang in the building. You already know what it is. And I mean, so let's keep reading. The context of this conversation was concern over the redistricting process and concern about the potential negative impact it might have on communities of color. My work speaks for itself. I've worked hard to lead the city through its most difficult time, Martinez said in her statement to CNN. Bonin and his husband Sean Arian are now asking the city council to remove Martinez as council president and says she needs to resign from office, which I believe is true. And I'm saying, we are appalled, angry and absolutely disgusted that Nori Martinez attacked our son with horrific racist slurs. And talk about, uh, her desire to physically harm him, which she did. Which she did, she said the little kid needed to beat that, bro, y'all, but y'all have to relax, bro. It's vile, abhorrent, I don't know what the hell that means. Uh, utterly disgraceful, the couple said in a joint statement, and the joint statement is right here. And I mean. Uh, Bonin and Arian added that they are equally angry and disgusted by the ugly racist comments about our son from Kevin De Leon and Ron Herrera, who should also resign their posts and by the, uh, by the acceptance of those remarks from Gil Cidio. The California Hawaii State Conference of the NAACP and the Los Angeles branch of the organization are calling for the resignation of all council members involved in that con, in that conversation and asking the city to investigate. How far the racist, the racial animus has impacted hiring and other decisions of the city council? They said in a joint statement, and that's true. Because them saying, if you got people in certain spots that, that feel this way about a certain race of people, that means that they're not gonna hire that race of people. If you have this disdain for certain people, you're not gonna hire those people, you're not gonna look out for those people. Those people's best interests are not your hands, bro. Like you're not thinking about the best interest of these people if you think that they little monkeys. That's just what it is. Uh, look up that mess, it was a private company. I don't know what you talking about, Avery, but salute. Fire all them and check their statuses. Yo, look, man, I, the status is probably checked already. And I mean, they, they, they already hold counsel, but how long are we gonna let this shit go on? And I mean, uh, in a statement Sunday, Cidio called the comments about Bonin's son simply unacceptable. So Cidio was one of the people that was in that conversation. I want to start by apologizing why I did not engage in the conversation and question. I was present at times during this meeting last year, Cidio said. It is my instinct to hold others accountable when they use derogatory or racial, uh, divisive language. Clearly I should have intervened. I failed in holding others and myself to the highest standard. The hurtful and harmful remarks made about my colleague's son was simply unacceptable. We choo, we choose public life, but our family should always be off limits and never a part of the political discourse, which is also true. My nigga Mark P, let me get back to StreamYard. Let me see what you say. If we get more into voting for our people from our communities to fight for funding in our neighborhoods, we can own the blocks. Yo, Mark P, see, the problem is this, bro. The problem is we, we as black people, we see other races as brothers and sisters and cousins and oh, we got the same ancestry, which we don't. A lot of their ancestry come from Spain and whatever was indigenous to that island. Some of them do have Afro ancestry, but even Africans are not black. This is what I have to understand, Africans are not black. Africans are Africans, they call us Akata. Black, the, the word black, the culture, it came from America. So this is what a lot of people have to understand, bro. These people, uh, we probably vote for these people because they have a certain, and I'm saying ethnicity. But y'all gotta understand, they not for us. They not for us. They not for us. Now I mean, let's go back to, to the, uh, conversation. Uh, Herrera has not responded, that's the other guy that was in the conversation, the CNN's request for a comment. But the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, uh, tweeted an apology from him to Bonin and his family and black and oxen, awaxen, I don't know what that is, community members. There is no justification and no excuse for the vile remarks made in that room, period. The apology said, and I didn't step up or to stop them and I will have to bear the burden of that cross moving forward. Which I believe ain't nothing gonna happen to them, bro. Like, I mean, like this shit happens all the time, bro. This shit happen all the time and there's no, there's, there's no recourse, there's, there's, there's nothing stopping it from happening, bro. Now I mean, it goes on to say, uh, De Leon released a statement, that's the last guy that was in that conversation to CNN Sunday saying, on that day, I fell short of the expectations we set for our leaders and I will hold myself to a higher standard. There were, there were comments made in the context of this meeting that are wholly inappropriate. And I regret appearing to condone and even contribute to certain insensitive comments made about a colleague and his family in private. I've reached out to that colleague personally, De Leon says. Despite the apologies, Bonin and Arian, uh, point to what they call a coordinated effort to weaken black political representation in Los Angeles. So Bonin and his husband Arian, uh, or that's his last name, they're saying it's beyond the kid, like it's beyond y'all niggas just being, uh, prejudiced towards people. It goes to the point where y'all niggas is stopping black people from becoming representation. So y'all niggas is stopping these black niggas from getting these political jobs. Y'all want all Spanish niggas to have these jobs and that's, and that's really what it is, bro. That's really what it is, Raheem salute, my G salute. The conversation revealed several layers of contempt for the people of Los Angeles and a cynical, ugly desire to divide the city rather than serve it. Bonin and Arian said in their statements, which it did, bro. It really did because it said that these four Hispanic city councilmen, which this is her right here, Hispanic is ever, salute to all my Latinos. But we have to have this conversation, are Latinos racist towards black people? That is a question, I'm not saying they are. What I'm asking is a question. What I'm asking is a question, cause I'm seeing it far too much. Coming from this side, I'm seeing it far too much. It's getting to a point where I, listen, I don't know what y'all niggas think behind closed doors, bro. But to hear this shit coming from, uh, four Latino people and they, and I'm saying, uh, apologizing, oh, at that moment, I had bad judgment. Bro, it's fine to not say it. Right? But what is not fine is to feel that way. Even if you didn't say it, y'all niggas still feel that way. Y'all still feel that way, son. So e- even if this didn't come out, even if y'all niggas didn't get leaked audio dropped, y'all still feel this way about African Americans, y'all still feel this way about black people. So that means that when you wake up every day and you see a black person, you have a disdain for them. You don't like them. So that means that when you making these laws and you're, y'all, y'all congregating to see where, what money is gonna go where and what community is gonna, what blocks is gonna get this and what area is gonna get that. Bro, I guarantee you the black people come last, bro. The black people come last, bro. You can't possibly make these statements and put your best foot forward for the black community, bro. It's no way in hell, bro, I'm sorry, I don't believe that. I believe that Mr. Bonin, uh, is definitely correct. I believe that they, there is some type of, uh, uh, workings to make sure that, you know, black people stay under, bro. And this is a fact, it's for everybody that believes that racism does not exist. Everybody is entitled to their beliefs and their opinions. My specific belief is that it does and it exists on a higher tier than what niggas believe. It's not about your neighbor next door, it's not about the nigga at the store. What it's about is these people that hold office that feel this way about people that look like me. That's what it's about. Understand. Would it, oh, why, why don't you just get, be a political office? Because everybody's against us. That's why I can't, cause everybody's against us. Except for some people, they need to fire that whole city council, uh, Poncho says. Except for the guy who didn't display racist remarks, everybody else needs to be fired and I think they will be held accountable. Uh, yeah, man, yo, listen, I think all four of them need to go. I think all four of them need to go. You, you, you know what you say, man, you guilty by association. It's like game green. Now I'm saying, listen, man, your, your toes got game green, we about to take the foot. Take the foot, clear it all out, take the foot, the, this is the problem, take the foot, bro. Take the whole foot off, matter of fact, take the knee down. Check more conversations. Leak more conversations to Reddit, because this is what's stopping the community from rising, bro. Everybody's not a gang member, everybody's not, uh, uh, out here going crazy, bro. Niggas is really trying to get these positions, bro. And these people, they don't like us, so they not gonna get the positions. It's just that simple, champ. It's just, you know, I want to goo, I want you to Google the discrimination lawsuit that just won by African Americans reportedly was massive. They got millions each, check it out. Well, I, I, I may need a little bit more information, but I'll look it up. Give me a second. Y'all let me know how y'all feel, are, 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 are the majority of Latinos prejudiced towards, uh, black people? Let me know. Because like I said, I'm seeing way too much of this shit right here, bro. I'm seeing way too much of the Latino shit. Like, bro, like, bro, I thought y'all niggas was cool with us, bro. I thought y'all niggas was our bedroom. Now I mean, we treat y'all niggas with respect, nigga, we body elotes and all that. We be fucking with y'all churros and shit when we see y'all on the train station. Now I mean, like, niggas fuck with y'all, bro, I got Latino family, like, my uncle Puerto Rican, bro. Like, he married my aunt, like Puerto Rican, they got kids, it's my cousins, they half black, half Puerto Rican. That's my favorite uncle, shout out to Uncle Alex. That's my favorite uncle, my most suave, my most suave, uh, suave mentee uncle, nigga. Now I mean, so I, I grew up loving Latinos, cause that's my uncle, bro. Know what I'm saying? Like, his mom's is always cool, even though she ain't really speak English too well, she was lovely. But I've been in a lot of situations where I can see the racism. I can see it, not from them, not from none of them, but from other Latinos, yes. The reason I believe that they'll be held accountable, Poncho says, is because that there are ethicals and they violated those codes by saying those things and then admitting that they did it, they're gone. Yo, listen, they may be gone. They may be gone, son, I'm not gonna hold you. These niggas may be gone, but at the end of the day, it don't stop there. It don't stop there, bro, this is just city council members, bro. This is just city council, bro. It don't stop there, bro. It don't stop there, I guarantee you, bro. I had another, uh, video where 20 officers, police officers was caught texting, saying wild racial slurs towards black people and, and wishing death and all that other shit. And I'm saying, like. Alright, hold on, LA defamation lawsuit, LA. What you said defamation, I'm not defamation lawsuit, what is that, what she said? Discrimination, I'm tweaking. I be high, y'all, forgive me. Discrimination. Let me see what this is. Is this it? Yo, listen, y'all niggas be having to send me links to shit, bro, because oh, wait, inside California's largest discrimination cases. Let's see, make sure y'all hit that like button, make sure y'all hit that subscribe button. Uh, Mark P says, Stino, I believe the black community needs to go speak in a public forum about the politicians. We did that in my hometown in the early nineties. Where you from, Mark P? Uh, in California's largest race bias cases, Latino workers are accused of abusing black colleagues. Oh. Is this it? Hold on, champs. I think you may be on to something, shout out to Avery. I think you may be on to something, I don't want to sign up for. But this is from the Los Angeles Times, I'm gonna pull it up on screen. Salute to Avery for that. Originally Roxbury, uh, what's that, Massachusetts? I got a crib in Massachusetts in Cape Cod, bro, on my soul. I think that's Massachusetts, I don't know, bro, like, I don't know the two lot of shits, but I should be confusing me, nigga. I was hustling, fuck you talk about, I was in school, but I was hustling, champ, respectfully. You gonna have to say the whole state, champ? Cause I may be wrong, fuck you talk about, M A, I don't know what that is, is that Maryland, is that Massachusetts or is that Maine, champ? Respectfully. I don't know what that is, dawg. I don't know what that is, Mark P. Roxbury, what is that, Maine, Maryland? Massachusetts? Said, I'm on the Cape now, alright, cool, so that's, so that's, uh, what you gonna call it? In California, largest race bias cases, Latino workers are accused of abusing black colleagues. This is big, man, I think I got it right here, Avery, let me know if this is it right here, champ. This is mean. Oh. Yo, I need everybody to share this, man, I need everybody to share this, bro. I ain't gonna hold you, bro, I need everybody to share this, man. Cause we about to get into the nitty gritty right now, I'm not gonna hold you, I wasn't expecting to do a long live. Like, I was gonna get on here and mention what I mentioned, but we, we about to get into the nitty gritty, man. So y'all make sure y'all hit that like button and share this shit real quick. And I mean, cause, bruh, what the hell is going on, man? I'm from New York, bro, so being, being from New York, we hand in hand with the Latinos, bro. That nigga Fat Joe was correct on that, I, I, I don't agree with everything Fat Joe be saying, uh, especially about hip hop, but for that fact, he is correct, and I'm saying, a lot of black and Latino people, uh, grew up together and shit. But a lot of other states is not like that, bro. It's not like that everywhere, bro. It's not like that everywhere, bro. A lot of these niggas don't like us, bro. That's just what it is, a lot of them niggas don't like us, bro. They don't come from places that accept us. But let's read this shit though, right here, champ? Cause we got my son looking mad angry right here, dog, what happened? Nearly every day, the On Time Ontario warehouse employee said he was stunned to hear racial slurs from Latino coworkers. They said it in English, they said it in Spanish all the time. Recalled Leon Simmons, a black father of four with a deep voice and gentle manner. When they look you right in the eye and call you the N-word to your face, it's dehumanizing. Thirty-two miles away at a Moreno Valley Warehouse, it was the same story. Another black laborer Benjamin Wat, Benjamin Watkins described how a Latina coworker called to him, hey monkey, hey you, you. And waved a banana in her hand. Wow, champs. Wow, champs. Gee, I'd have been fired that day, respectfully, I, yo, listen. Yo, listen, I scrap racist people, bro, that's just what I do, bro. I, like, bro, I'm about to tell a story later, matter of fact, since we talking about the racist shit. After I drop this shit, I'm gonna do a Storytime video where I talk about how I violated, uh, a racist guy that said some racist stuff to me, respectfully. And I'm saying, but yeah, bro, this, this is, this is, this is ill right here, bro. In America's long history, harassment and discrimination against black workers has usually involved white perpetrators. And that remains the case today, but with the rapid growth of the Latino population now at 19% in the US and 39% in California itself, Latinos form the majority in many low-wage workplaces. And instances of anti-black bias and colorism among them is drawing new scrutiny. Even as activists in the two communities forge alliances over criminal justice and economic development. Latinos certainly are targets of job discrimination as well and continue to struggle for, uh, equity in the workplace. But the two largest racial bias cases brought by the federal government in California in the last decade allege widespread abuse of hundreds of black employees at warehouses in the inland empire, the state's booming distribution hub for the trade between US and Asia. In interviews, black employees said a torrent of racist insults and discriminatory treatment was mainly inflicted by Latino coworkers and supervisors who compose roughly three quarters of the warehouse, uh, workforce. Alright, at the sprawling facilities in Ontario and Moreno Valley. Yo, listen, man, this is, this is crazy. So, you know, the Latinos, and I'm saying, they, they, they do good laboring jobs, bro, like, these niggas be on they labor and shit. But in the areas that's, you know, heavily Latino, where they hold the majority, bro, them niggas be coming at black niggas crazy, apparently. And I'm saying, they be coming at us retardy, you heard? Mayate, a type of beetle and Spanish slang, a type of beetle and a Spanish slang for the N-word was a common taunt. According to interviews and court filings, mayate. Yo, listen, man, if I hear any of these words, just know, sweet, 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 it's coming. Shit about to, shit about to go crazy, champ. Shit about to go crazy, champ, I'm learning new stuff. US EEOC Commission lawsuits allege that supervisors at the global medical supplier Cardinal Health and and Ryder Integrated Logistics, shout out to Ryder, I was about to work there too. That's, that's crazy. A subsidiary of the trucking giant, along with their staffing firms, routinely ignored harassment in Spanish and, and English, uh, at their inland empire warehouses. They gave black employees the hardest manual jobs, denied them training and promotions, and failed to take action despite dozens of complaints, according to court filings. So this is what y'all gotta understand. It don't just be the slurs. The slurs is the shit that, you know, get niggas mad. Oh, yeah, the slurs. Would it really be? And what people don't understand what racism is, is, it, it holds you back, bro. Cause these same people that's making slurs and saying slurs, they the people that's in power. So when you're trying to move up in your job, cause you're about to expand your family and you've been here for a long time and you've been doing everything right, and you still can't get a promotion, and niggas is saying that's because you ain't work hard enough. Pull yourself up by your bootstraps. Y'all don't pull yourself up by y'all bootstraps. That's cause everybody is against us. Y'all don't pull yourself up. Y'all don't work hard enough. Y'all lazy. Y'all this, y'all that. Why go to work if everybody is against you? I don't understand, bro. Why go to work? Why go to work if everybody's against you and nobody believes when you tell? Niggas is telling. They ignoring. They ignoring. Oh my God, bro. This is crazy, bro. This is crazy. Many of the black workers were hired through temp agencies when they complained. Managers, both white and Latino, retaliated by disciplining them or abruptly firing them. And this is the bad thing about working with them temp agencies. They hire you fast, they fire you fast, cause you're disposable. Understand that. Temp agency's always been bad. Never work at a temp agency. Uh, firing them, according to the EEOC, others felt forced to quit because of intolerable working conditions created by the hostile work environment, the lawsuits alleged. Cardinal, Ryder, and their temp firms denied the accusation, but as scores of black employees came forward and the EEOC interviewed witnesses, the company settled the case last year rather than face jury trials. "We are seeing an increase in larger race harassment cases," said in a park regional attorney for the EEOC's Los Angeles District Office. "The nature of them has gotten uglier. There's a more blatant display of hatred with the N-word, with imagery, with nooses. All the violence you're seeing in the news is, is manifesting in the employment context." Let me see what my nigga Mark P. says, man, before I keep going. This is ill. I'm not gonna hold you. Salute to Avery for, uh, putting me on to this case, cause I did not know about this. Y'all niggas know I speak out on racism all the time. Racism be heavy, I think, more in the conservative, traditional Latin community, but it is different on a case-by-case bias. Well, listen, man, it, it's, 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 I don't know, bro, like, I don't know if it's more in, in, in the conservative community or whatever. What I'm seeing is this. We just spoke about city council. These are people that hold power, right? These niggas caught, got caught saying some crazy shit. They got caught calling this, this man, black son, a little monkey, which is crazy. You never supposed to say nothing like that, bro. About, but if you feel like that, you're definitely about to hold us back when certain things need to be done for our community. Now we're looking at the biggest discrimination lawsuit that ever happened in Los Angeles, and we see more people with power. These are supervisors and managers and people that hold positions in these different laborer companies, which probably halfway only hire Latinos. Right? And the black people that get hired, they give them the hardest pay, the, the, uh, hardest labor jobs, and they don't give them no promotions. They don't give them no, no additional training to be able to get those promotions. So they holding us back, bro. They holding us back, bro. And that's the real problem, bro. All the bananas, shorty held the banana ass son and all that, yeah. All that could be handled with a good one-two. Hee-hee-hee. Know what I'm saying? But all this other shit, man, this shit is insane. Nah, most of these don't jack us. Bro, listen, man, y'all niggas go to Wa- uh, Washington Heights, bro. Y'all niggas go to Washington Heights by yourself, bro. Go ahead. Go ahead, bro. I guarantee you somebody will, so- somebody will press you, tell you, you not supposed to be around there. I guarantee you it, respectfully. The black workers won though, respectfully reportedly. Yeah, they won, but the company still exists. Now, they gonna say, "Oh, just don't say certain stuff," but the practices will still be the same. The practices was, will forever be the same, respectfully. "Two decades ago, discrimination was viewed as a black-white paradigm," Park said. "The feeling was minorities can't be discriminated." But it could be. Asians discriminating. It could be Latinos discriminating. Regardless of what color you are, you don't get a free pass. Now about three hundred black workers are gaining compensation, some as much as tens of thousands of dollars. Through the inland empire settlements, Cardinal agreed to pay one point four-five million. Ryder and Kimco Staffing Services with supplied workers to Ryder settled for one million apiece. So altogether, it's about three point four-five million. As the settlement broken down to everybody that filed, which is about three hundred people. Uh, some probably got more than others. That's what it is. Know what I'm saying? Uh, let me see. The warehouse operators and their staffing firms, including a Glendale temp agency, Apple One, with supplied workers to Cardinal, must offer extensive harassment training in English and Spanish, but and submit to stringent monitoring for verbal abuse, bias, and retaliation. The Los Angeles Times contacted more than two dozen cu- current and former Latino workers from Cardinal and Ryder. None agreed to do an interview. Which is strange. Why would none of y'all agree to do an interview, bro? Cause y'all know, y'all niggas be trying to violate. Over the last decade, the agency has won settlements and one hundred and seventy-one race discrimination lawsuits involving black coworkers. Fifty-nine cases involving Latino victims, twelve involving Asian victims, and six involving white victims. Though the agency tracks the race and ethnicity of victims, it does not compile official statistics of offenders. No other databases of private cases categorized by per- perpetrators, race. This makes it hard to gauge the contact, the, the extent of anti-black hostility from specifically Latino workers, cause they don't, they don't classify, uh, the people that's actually doing it. Know what I mean? My nigga Pancho, once again, says, "I tell you this, after November, Latinos are going to have a problem because Republicans would be in power. Watch what I tell you." I don't really know about all that, bro. Know what I'm saying? I'm not really political like that. Um, I don't really keep up with politics and who's gonna be in power and what's gonna happen. Cause at the end of the day, that, that snow still gonna sell, champ, respectfully. And I always been that way, bro. Know what I'm saying? Niggas do what y'all do, but that's probably why it's, it's, it's so many of these people in, in office, cause a lot of us feel defeated, bro. Know what I'm saying? Like, a lot of us, a lot of people like me that come from where I come from, bro, niggas, niggas already feel defeated, bro. Niggas already know a lot of these niggas don't like us, so what we voting for? On my soul. Know what I'm saying? That's just, I mean, it may be stupid to some, some people, man, "Oh, this nigga's Tino Wiley", but that shit is just facts, bro. Nigga sold snow, my nigga. I been locked up for snow, nigga, on my soul. So, I mean, that's just the way it is, bro. I'm not, know what I'm saying? It's bad. I'm saying it's a double-edged sword, but that shit is what it is, bro. Respectfully. What it says, uh, "But court files victims' allegation and employer records show that in the last decade, about a third of anti-black bias suits filed by the EEOC, Los Angeles and San Francisco offices involved discrimination by Latinos. About a third involved white offenders and a third was unspecified." So, let me say that again. Court filings show, victims' allegation and employer records show that in the last decade, that's ten years, about a third of anti-black bias suits filed by the EEOC, Los Angeles and San Francisco offices involved discrimination by Latinos. That's a third. A third involved white offenders and a third was unspecified. So they don't tell the third one, but for a third of all the anti-black bias lawsuits filed for it to be Latinos, does that show y'all something? I mean, I'm not up here preaching no type of nothing. All I'm saying is, I see what's going on, champ. I see what's going on, bro. I see what's going on. Mark P. says, "Facts. Uh, the Republicans and Democrats just use minority issues to win votes." Bro, I don't pay attention to none of that, bro. Respectfully, bro. A nigga was homeless, nigga been poor, nigga been shot, nigga been on the wrong side of, of the fence. A nigga been, know what I mean? Opportunities taken away from a nigga, bro. A nigga had to fight back from nothing. Respectfully, I don't, I don't, I don't really know, bro. Like, I don't trust none of them niggas. I don't trust them. And I mean, that's just me. Everybody is, is entitled to their own opinion. That's just me, bro. That's just me. I can't trust these niggas, bro. Cause at the end of the day, nigga, I'm not about to be a politician, bro. You wanna know why I can't be a politician? Because it's niggas in office and it's niggas that hold certain office that's not gonna let you do that shit if you don't walk or talk a certain way, nigga. And I'm the streets, baby. I'm the fucking streets, nigga, on my soul. Like, I got gravel running through my veins, nigga. I'm the streets, nigga. I really been through this shit, my nigga. They not gonna let niggas be in no office, bro. So why should I care, bro? It's just, it just, it just hurts to see that people that supposed to be close to our culture, that supposed to be part of our culture, or so they say, is having these feelings about us, bro. Know what I mean? And I'mma tell y'all something else. New Jersey, I, I lived in, uh, Elizabeth, New Jersey for like a hot six months, right? So while I was in Elizabeth, New Jersey, I realized what that area is. So that area used to be a heavily Italian area. What happened was the Italians started moving either to, to Staten Island, which is right across the bridge from the Koski, uh, whatever, Kusky Asco Bridge, whatever the hell bridge that is, that's right there, uh, or they started moving north. So a lot of, uh, Hispanic people, I think from like El Salvador and Colombia, shit like that, started moving in the area. So on my block, it was all Latinos, bro. When I moved on the block, uh, we had a duplex. So I lived upstairs from a Spanish family that they used to rent the basement out to other people, which they, they wasn't supposed to do, right? So, long story short, they went in my apartment. Um, they made it very hard for me. They called the police on me. They called, um, they called everybody on me. Y'all can take guesses. I'm not going, I'm saying, cause I don't wanna, but yeah. They, they called certain people on me. Uh, they did things to make me wanna move, bro. It was either boom on you or move with my family that I have. So I end up moving. Know what I'm saying? But being there really showed me that, you know, these niggas is not for you. These niggas don't talk to you. These niggas don't wave to you. They don't say good morning. Uh, it's a real disdain, bro. Like, it's, 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 that, that shit is very bad. And that shit really showed me that, bro. My nigga Pancho says, "I never understood why we even allowed them to be a part of our community so easily and now look at this." I mean, yo, look, bro, like, when, when you the underdog, bro, this is what happens. When you the underdog and people, you don't wanna treat people like they the underdog. Right? So when people pay homage and they come to your community and they live in your community and they, they act like they fuck with you, niggas, like, black people is a loving people, bro. We are accepting people, bro. We don't move out of hate for others. Know what I'm saying? Cause we already know, like, what it is. Everybody don't like us already. So that's why we, know what I'm saying? Like, oh, come on. Know what I'm saying? Everybody, bro, like, I been through this, so I can feel y'all pain. But you gotta understand, where these niggas come from, they, they taught to not like us. The propaganda that's already put out there in these movies earlier, since when these niggas grandmothers was, was young. I'm talking about black and white movies. The propaganda already is out there, bro. So they already looked at black niggas in America a certain way before they even got here, bro. On my soul. So, that's just what that is, man. Pancho says, "I feel your pain, family out here. I smash on them any chance I get here, just because I know they really feel." And I haunt them. That's me, though. Yo, listen, man. Don't be out here doing nothing crazy, bro. Know what I'm saying? It's just about realization. It's about doing what you gotta do for you and yours. When I mean you and yours, I mean people that actually look like you, that be the same complexion and melanin as your own. Um, that's, that's not a bad thing. I want everybody to understand that. That's not a bad thing, bro, but everybody else is doing it. We the only ones that's, that's taught not to do it like that. Know what I'm saying? Like, we, we the only ones that taught to share. Other people is taking us, taking stuff from us and then sharing their own stuff within their own. As I said before, when I mentioned the dollar and how the dollar moves within the community, if you look at a Chinese community, which y'all can Google this, a dollar bounces anywhere between six to eight times before it leaves that community. Right? If you go to, uh, uh, white community, it bounces around six times. Latino community, it bounces around four to five times. Our community, it doesn't bounce once. Our dollar does not bounce one time within our community, which means we're not spending our money within each other. Guess what? It may, it may bounce once, but that's it, bro. We go get our hair done. The shorty at the hair salon, she's gonna go buy more hair from the Asians. Know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's, it, it leaves our community at that point. Know what I'm saying? So, this shit is crazy, bro. Know what I'm saying? Everybody is not out for us. Uh, I mean, everybody's not with us. A lot of people are out for us, and this, this is just the facts. I'm not preaching anything. I'm not saying anything crazy. These is articles that I'm reading that are facts. Y'all can go Google this. This is Los Angeles Times and CNN. I'm not up here making any stories, please. For all y'all that may feel offended by what I'm saying, these are articles that are, these are facts. You, you can't be offended by facts. There's no way to be offended by facts. These are all facts. These are lawsuits and things that people are saying. So, salute to everybody. Y'all let me know what y'all feel in the comment section, man. It's getting real crazy. Um, like I said, I'm gonna drop a Storytime, bro. I think I'mma, I think I'mma do, uh, when I fought back against racism, man. Know what I'm saying? I think I'mma do a Storytime later. Y'all niggas stay tuned for that. I probably gonna go, "Oh, yeah, tonight, eight o'clock, eight-thirty, I'm going live about Kanye West." I think today's gonna be a, a little Fight Against Prejudice Day. Know what I'm saying? I think today is, that's, that's gonna be the theme today. Know what I'm saying? It's gonna be the Fight Against the Racial Injustice Day. Yeah, I mean, matter of fact, I'mma, I'mma play my racist song, not racist song, but my Fight Against Racism song. So, probably, probably tonight, probably play that shit. Went through an issue in Washington Heights in the past. It got ugly, but they respect me for it. Yeah, I mean, whenever you show somebody that, that you not Uchi Wiley, they gonna respect you, champ. Know what I'm saying? Whenever you show somebody that you not Uchi, they gonna respect you, champ. I don't give a fuck what color they are, bro. That's why a lot of boxers and shit, like, they respected each other early. A lot of baseball players and shit, they respected each other early. Basketball players, they respected each other early, like, because they got to show each other, nigga, I'm better than you. Like, nigga, you gotta respect my skill, bro. You can be prejudiced and all that, but you have to respect my skill, champ, respectfully. Out here in Oakland, salute to California, man. Out here in Oakland in the Bay Area, there's a lot of black support systems still, and that's why I'm moving from here because I see what it is anywhere else. Hold on. Out here in Oakland and in the Bay Area, there's a lot of black support system, s- system still, and that's why I'm moving from here. So where you at now, champ, respectfully? We need to read more anyway. Yeah, I, I mean, I think I do a pretty good job when I be reading these articles, know what I mean? But yeah, man, niggas do need to definitely read more, do a lot more research, um, and look at everything that's going on, man, because it's, it's a lot of shit going on, man. It's a lot of shit going on, bro, while, while niggas is drinking. It's a lot of shit going on, bro, while while niggas is drinking, know what I'm saying? Casamigos and taking pictures with stacks to their face and all that. Know what I'm saying? It's it's it's, it's stuff going on, man. It's important stuff going on, man. Forget Whack One Hundred with his with his cheeks out and all that, bro. Forget all that, man. It's real stuff going on, dog. Know what I'm saying? It's real stuff happening. Y'all niggas, know what I'm saying? Gotta pay attention. Raheem says, I'm light-skinned and indigenous from the Chinacock tribe, so I get mistaken as Hispanic a lot. Yeah. My grandmother is Chinacock Indian. We, uh, we spread our ashes on the reservation in Long Island. I forgot what what part of Long Island that is. This was a long time ago. Uh, but yeah, bro, my family be be going to the reservation and all the time. I don't, bro, like, man, I grew up in the streets, bro. Know what I'm saying? Like, I, I didn't believe in all that shit, bro. I ain't gonna hold you. Niggas like, yo, bro, let's go to the resi- nah, bro, I gotta get this bread. I ain't gonna hold you, like, I'm in the streets, daddy, respectfully. Uh, listen, man, it is what it is, man. Salute to everybody. Salute to the haters. Salute to people that's not hating. Whatever the case is, bro, I'm still gonna be here doing content, reporting on things that I feel, uh, strongly about, man. Know what I'm saying? Salute to you, though. Salute to you. Salute to wherever you came from, whoever sent you, uh, respectfully. Salute. What my nigga Raheem say? My grandmother is buried out there, too. We may be related. We may be, bro. I'm not gonna hold you. We may be. We may be, son. We may be. That's crazy, though. Yeah, son. I mean, it's it's, that's just what it is, man. Like I said. I mean, it's a lot of people that's not gonna be here for you. It's a lot of people that is gonna be here for you, uh, respectfully. It is what it is, man. Know what I mean? But yeah, y'all let me know what y'all think about, uh, the city council and other people that hold power being anti-black, man, and making anti-black remarks. Do you feel like it matters? Do you feel like, uh, it don't matter? Let me know in the comments, man. Salute. Make sure y'all go over to weartough.com. That is weartough.com. For all the merch, man. Go ahead and go copy a t-shirt, go copy some socks. We got candles on there, sweaters, hoodies, jackets, book bags. Yeah, I'm saying, we got everything on there, champ, respectfully. Um, yeah, man, I'll be back probably eight o'clock, seven-thirty, eight o'clock with that Kanye live, man. I wanna know how everybody feels about the shirt he came out with, man, and why niggas feel like that, man? Why is everybody up in arms about Kanye in that Clear Labs Matter shirt? Uh, I don't get it, but I guess we'll talk about it later, champ. Yeah, Mark P, I'm gonna be back on, bro. Know what I'm saying? I'm about to get that shit situated, posted out. I'm gonna leave y'all niggas with some commercials from the website. Salute to everybody, man. Salute to everybody. No disrespect to nobody. I love everybody, bro. You already know what it is, man. Salute. Warning: Cloudy teen causes extreme cases of dumbness, reckless acts of mookism, and total loss of morality. Are you chasing clout? So is everyone, but why don't you look the part while doing it? Get your official clout merch right now at weartough.com. That is weartough.com. If you're chasing clout and you're out here on some mookism shit, go ahead and go over to weartough.com and get your merch today. Today, eh, today?